Good evening. It is January 12th, Thursday, 2023. This is the Guilford Board of Education. We are having a meeting tonight to hear from Dr. Freeman about the proposed budget for the 2023-2024 year. So I'm going to turn it right over to Dr. Freeman.
Thank you, Dr. Bell Stracy. I do want to start with a few acknowledgements and thank yous. First, I want to thank the board for accommodating the scheduling of this special presentation tonight rather than as part of your regular meeting Monday evening, which would have been more traditional. I very much appreciate your flexibility. This past week has been a wonderful and important week for my family and for me, and I very much appreciate the scheduling of this special meeting. I am excited to present this year's budget presentation to all of you. I also want to thank Mr. Bowden and Mrs. Trudeau for all of their work in building this budget together. I want to extend a special thanks to the DLT this year. We experimented with a more open, more collaborative budget build this year where we brought different members of the leadership team in to work with the business office collaboratively. All of the elementary principals worked on their budget presentations together at the same time this year rather than coming in four separate times. The technology department and maintenance department presented collaboratively. There was much more of a group process this year, including an overall meeting of the full leadership team to vet and make final decisions. I want to thank all of them for all of that time. And I very much want to thank Teri Fiandella and Lori Hahn for helping putting together the materials and the final presentations that we will go through tonight. Much of this will feel familiar to board members who have gone through previous presentations. In some ways, this is a very different budget than budgets that we have presented in the past. It starts from a different place this year. We are really excited this year to present a budget that builds and aims towards a portrait of the graduate, which is at this point taking the space that used to be filled by a vision and mission that we would put up at this point. But it is important to note that in all of the conversations that went into building this budget, we recognized that every decision that we were making, that every dollar that we were requesting, that we will be requesting, and that we will be putting into place is in service of helping our students become adaptable learners, responsible collaborators, effective communicators, critical thinkers, empathetic people, and global citizens. And while we touch on that lightly here with this one slide, I do want to remind board members and particularly community members that there is much more detailed information about our Portrait of the Graduate available on our website. And I want to encourage people to look at the more detailed versions and explanations of this guiding light that we use. The budgets that we will continue to build and present each year continue to support our work moving in this direction. Specifically this year, that Portrait of the Graduate comes closer to ground level and becomes more immediate in the district priorities and initiatives that we set for this coming year, which then inform the requests that we will be making in the next several weeks as we look forward to next year. Remember that our priorities focus on three specific environments. First, they focus on the overall environment of the school community, the environment that we want our children to spend their time in, an environment that is physically and emotionally healthy and equitable and caring, and that helps our students learn how to be healthy and positive decision makers. Building on that is also the importance of the professional environment that we create. We lean into a district where building leaders are instructional leaders, not managers, where teachers are supported by coaches and professional developers, where teachers are learners themselves, and where we create a rich professional environment so that we can place the right people in front of the students every day. And then that leads to the third environment, which is the classroom environment, where classrooms are active, vigorous, and rigorous centers of learning that are built on years of accrued professional knowledge, building on the principles of learning, focusing on the state-required standards, collecting evidence, and measuring student growth so that we are creating the types of classrooms where students can be engaged in the types of tasks that they become those learners that we describe in the Portrait of the Graduate. Specifically this year, that means doing a good job rolling out this new portrait and talking about it, continuing to work on classroom spaces where kids are wrestling with important topics every day, speaking to the policy change that you made this past July, where we double down on the importance of helping teachers know that they have to talk about important, even controversial, topics in classrooms, continuing to focus on trauma-informed instruction and social-emotional wellness, and again, creating those environments where students wrestle with important work, where our schools are equitable and mentally supportive of mental health and academically challenging and rigorous. From that, we start to get even more granular and then talk about our budget process. We do have expectations of ourselves as we build a budget. And again, every decision is built on these four assumptions. Our first priority is safe and healthy schools, and every dollar spent has to help make the schools safer and healthier. Nothing that we do can cut against that priority. Immediately after that is that we maintain a dogged focus on instruction and academics. I think there has been some conversation in this community about whether or not talking about socially-emotional wellness is taking our eye off of the academic ball. It's absolutely not. It is helping our students be more ready to focus on that academic ball. So every dollar that goes into this budget is focused on instruction and learning. Every year, we work to extend opportunities. We are not interested in the status quo. We're not interested in going backwards or dismantling a successful school system. Every year, we come to you and to this table and to the community expecting that this budget makes us better. It doesn't just tread water. And then finally, we won't ask for a new dollar without having examined the resources that we have in place first, and we take great pride in the creativity that we have brought in past years about reutilizing, repurposing, and reassigning resources before simply asking for more because there is a new need that comes forward. And then finally, the last thing that we look at before we begin making the budget decisions is the enrollment itself. We only budget for students that we expect to be with us next year. We're not padding this budget. We're not building for numbers that we don't anticipate. The budget, the enrollment slide that you see in front of you is built on a simple formula of rolling the current grades forward. We take the grades that are in place this year, move them forward, and we expect a kindergarten that will come in at the same size as the current kindergarten. We'll put all these slides on the website tomorrow morning as well. With that simple calculus, we're projecting a declining enrollment of 57 students. The graduating 12th graders will be going out, and we expect we'll be losing 12 more seniors than we will be enrolling kindergarteners next year. If you look back at the demographic study that we've put on our website that you received two meetings ago, the demographers in that study, accounting for in-migration, new home sales, home starts, they're actually projecting a slightly smaller decline of about 30 students next year. So we anticipate that we will be smaller next year, but we'll probably be smaller somewhere between 30 and 50 students next year. This is probably a slightly conservative projection of going down 57 students based on a very simple formula. A much more complicated formula has us at 30 students smaller next year. And remember, in the next year or two, we will hit our nadir. From that point, the demographic study expects that we will begin to see increasing enrollments again. This is one of our largest senior classes moving out. We should expect in the next several years to start seeing some modest increases in enrollment coming over the next five to 10 years. All of that being said, then here is the big reveal. This year's budget request, therefore, built on those assumptions and targeting that Portrait of a Graduate, we are proposing that the Board of Education request $68,766,475. This would be a year-over-year increase, an increase over this year's current budget of $3,136,741. It's a percentage increase of 4.78% this year. I want to put out right at the start, that number does not appear to be out of alignment with what we are seeing across the state from other similarly situated school districts. I've seen a number of initial proposals that are coming in at or slightly above the 5% mark. Districts that we benchmark ourselves against are coming in at 5.5. I've seen a school district coming in in the high sixes already this year. I'll talk more about the reasons for those increases, but I want to put out very early that while this may seem high in Guilford over the last six or seven years, I don't believe that this is going to be a significantly high request when compared against other requests being made in the state this year. There's a number of reasons for that, and I'll come back to those reasons repeatedly as we move through the next several slides. To put that request into some context, in six of the last seven years, we've requested increases that are below 2%, many years significantly below 2%. Last year looked like an outlier when we came in with a final budget that was slightly above 5%. This year's initial request is coming in lower than last year's request, but higher than those six years previous to that. I think it's important to note, and I think it's one of the driving factors around this year's request, and I'll come back to this again, but taking these eight years together, including last year's increase of more than 5 and this year's increase of slightly below 5, would still leave us at an average increase of lower than 2% over those last eight years. That's important to note, and I'm going to come back to that several times through the course of this presentation. This request is built on a number of efficiencies. It may seem odd to make this point when we're coming in at 4.34% increase, but I believe that this budget takes advantage of and is built on a number of really positive efficiencies. One falls in the area of special education. Special education budgeting, which has been one of the most volatile portions of our budget, has stabilized over the last several years, and I'll show that to you in a following slide, and you'll be able to see that more visually. We have also continued the practice of bringing services into Guilford, which both, I believe, provides better service for our local students, but also helps us to avoid outplacements. This year, we opened a transition program for 18- to 22-year-old students at 73 Church Street. We are servicing a small number of students really well in that location locally in their home community and probably avoided two or three more expensive outplacements by doing so. So by creating the service for our students in district, we avoided expensive tuition payments that would be going out of our community to some other location. That's one of the practices that's created that stabilization that we've talked about. Salaries this year are going to be a cost center. They are the single largest cost increase and cost center in this year's budget. That's not unusual. In 11 of the last 12 years, salaries have been our highest area of increase. Where a people-focused business, salaries should be the driving factor. The reason I list that as an efficiency here, as well as, I'm going to mention it as a cost center later, is that because we're working to maintain two important positions in grant funding. Two of the positions that we have carried in the ESER grants, specifically a school psychologist and a school social worker, are not built into this year's base budget, even though the ESER grant is sunsetting. That's because we are confident that we will be able to provide funding through them through competitive mental health grants that have been made available at the federal level. That's a bit of a risk. These are not guaranteed grants. They're not block grants. We need to write for those grants, and we need to win the competitive grant. We believe we will be able to do so and that we'll be able to continue funding these important positions without building them into that base budget. If we don't land that competitive grant, then we will have a difficult force choice to make. At that time, we'll have to determine whether or not we continue those positions unbudgeted and find a way to cover the cost. Or, as we have been asked by some community members, the pandemic is over and it's time to cut those positions that were funded by ESER, we'll have to make that difficult decision. Again, it's a risk, but I believe it's a reasonable risk. We're confident that we will land those grants. And again, I need to give credit to the principals and the work that's being done at the building level. Year after year after year, we are able to keep building costs down and reasonable because the principals and the teachers are responsive to enrollment changes, work to only spend monies responsibly, and quite honestly, rely on a really generous community and generous parents who send their students to school with supplies rather than putting that burden on the local budget to provide everything that students might need in the classroom. We very much count on the parent support in building-level decisions. I want to take a minute to illustrate that special education spending that we've talked about. The blue line, you know, has been the special education budget line, and the red line is the actual spending in special education. I want to draw your attention to the last six years of the actual spending and note how we have taken the roller coaster profile out of that spending. We have done a better job in special education predicting what monies we will need and then spending those monies, and in fact, coming in under budget for three of the last six years, which is not, had not been usual in the years before. We'd previously been over budget by $600,000 and $700,000 in the special ed line, and in the last several years, we haven't reduced services, but we've gotten better at predicting and planning for those services. And that allows us to make better decisions in the whole budget when such a significant cost center can be predicted better. And we take great pride in the lines that you see on this, in this illustration. I want to note that this slide speaks to transportation, contracted services, and tuition. It does not include special education staffing, and we do that on purpose because special ed teachers don't only service students with special needs. It is really difficult to tease apart a staff person's time because when students with special needs receive services in classroom settings, it is both the classroom teacher and the special ed teacher who are partnering and supporting all 25 students, not just that individual special education student. It's through, it's through arrangements like the programming that we've created at 73 Church Street that has allowed us to control these spends. You will note that the spending is increasing this year. A significant portion of that is the transportation increased costs. I'm actually going to note for you where tuition is not a significant increase this year, but transportation costs associated with special education saw a significant increase this year, as did transportation for all of our students this year. So we spend time talking about efficiencies. We take great pride in the efficiencies that are built into this budget, but the story of the budget every year is usually the story of the cost drivers. What circumstances surround the budget build this year that drive the budget? You will all remember that last year, the story of the budget was about medical costs increasing. We saw a $1.5 million increase in medical costs last year. For the only time in 13 budgets that I have prepared here, did we see any other cost greater than the increase in salaries? Last year, medical costs were greater than the salary cost. This year, the story of the budget falls into these six areas. And the first one, as I think it should be, is the salary increase. I want to note that the salary increase you're seeing on this slide does not include any of the individual position investments that I'm going to show you on a following slide. These salary increases that you see represented here are primarily driven by contractual cost increases, by the teacher shortage, by the fact that while in the past, we have been able to count on the idea of a veteran teacher who retires out and us making a less expensive hire to replace that person, in the last two or three years of the teacher shortage, and in this year specifically, we have spent more to replace some vacancies in the environment that we find ourselves in hiring teachers right now. Included in that salaries increase are substitute costs. The teacher shortage is driving some of that number. Additionally, we've negotiated five new contracts with bargaining units this year, and in the changing environment, some of those contracts have been higher than contracts renegotiated in the past. I'll speak to the teacher contract specifically. The three-year teacher contract that we entered into this year through mediation, we did not do this haphazardly. We went through mediation with the Teachers Association. We still landed on a contract that I think is fair and appropriate and responsible and reasonable. In fact, if I had my druthers, it would be higher. I think teachers should be paid better, but it's the highest teacher contract that we've entered into in my time here in Guilford. Everybody is seeing teacher shortage impacts. New Haven entered into a three-year teacher contract recently that is over a 15% increase over three years. Teachers in New Haven Public Schools will be recognizing a 5% increase for each of the next three years. I believe they deserve every cent of that increase. Guilford is not that high. The Guilford contract was 3.25 or, sorry, 11.25% spread over three years. That is part of the salary increase that we're seeing and that we're absorbing this year. There is again a medical increase. Last year, the medical increase was $1.5 million. This year, we are projecting an $800,000 increase to our medical costs. Remember, we do our medical, we do our budget early. We're earlier than most other communities. We remain hopeful that with more months coming in, we may be able to make an adjustment in that line and that we may be able to point you or the Board of Finance to an adjustment if we can better that number. But while that's only about half of what it was last year, and that feels like a relief, it is higher than it has been in any previous year with the exception of last year. So the medical increase continues to be part of the story of this year's budget. At a recent operations meeting and then at a regular meeting, we extended our transportation contract with our transportation company, and while I believe we got a very favorable extension of the contract, transportation costs are going up across the state. There's been a bus driver shortage. Fuel costs are going up. That is a significant driver this year. Tuition costs are increasing. I will argue that $87,000 is a small increase in tuition, but it's one of the more significant numbers in our budget. When we talk later about options that you, the board, have to adjust this budget, I'm going to point out that tuition may be a place that we want to add dollars. $87,000 is a little bit of a risk as an increase, but we wanted to point it out. Just as in all of our homes, heating costs are increasing, and software is a significant increase this year, computer software, for two significant reasons, three reasons really. We purchased a number of software packages with ESER monies that we thought we would need as we transitioned into hybrid and at-home schooling. Many of those packages we rely, continue to rely on in classrooms. They provide all sorts of services, instructional services, even when students aren't home on a regular basis, and we need to move those from the ESER funds into the regular budget. We have brought in a Munis component that will help us with our HR components, and there's an expense associated with that. And then, as with almost everything else in this budget, pretty much every software contract, we have went up significantly this year as we moved into inflation concerns. These six items, and these six items alone, represent essentially a 4% increase. If we were only putting these six items forward and not talking about any other investments, this budget would still be at a 4% increase. Remember, the entire budget is a 4.78% increase. The story of this year's budget is very much the story of these cost drivers. To give you a little more detail on that medical spend that I mentioned, again, you'll see that medical went up $1.5 million last year and then another $800,000 this year. It is that two-year impact of medical that is driving this budget, and I'll explain that much more clearly with the next slide. But again, take the time to look that even though this year feels better because it's not a million and a half, it's half of that, if it wasn't for last year, that would be an enormous hit. That would feel like a huge hit if we weren't comparing it to last year's hit. It's a significant increase that's driving this budget. And again, remember what we did with medical last year as I move on to the next slide, which is this year's investments. Never before have I showed you an investment slide where so many of the places that we want to put our money are already in the budget. The reason for that was last year's medical increase. In our effort to absorb last year's medical increase and stay below 5.5 or 5.7%, we made some really difficult decisions around classroom positions. We focused on absorbing the medical increase, and we were frugal around classroom decisions that were made. As we moved into the summer months and the beginning of this school year, we recognized that we made decisions that were too frugal, and we had students who needed those classroom positions. Right out of the gate, we enrolled a kindergarten that was larger than we had anticipated. We saw pre-K needs that were larger than we had predicted. We continued hearing from second-grade parents about class sizes that were beginning to reach 23 and 24 in a second-grade classroom. We saw special education needs that we recognized required additional case management. So those first four positions, while they are not in this year's current budget, those are positions working in classrooms this year. Those are classrooms that are established. There are teachers in those classrooms, and there are students in those classrooms. So while the budget needs to catch up with that reality, those are positions that are in our buildings and working with our students today. That includes a part-time custodian at Lakes, which is funded by ESER through the end of this school year, but that ends at the end of this school year. That's a necessary custodial position. We found that with that addition of .5 at Lakes, we're able to hold on to our night custodians. Before that addition, we were going through a revolving door of people taking the job, feeling unable to keep up with the demands that we were placing on them, and leaving either for another position in district or leaving the district entirely. Now that we're at 1.5 night positions at Lakes, we're holding on to those positions. So we believe that's an important position to hold on to. And it includes an FOI clerk. Quite honestly, the only new requests that are being made in this budget are for a part-time special ed position, for an expansion of world language provided at the high school with a really exciting opportunity to bring Japanese instruction into our high school and on top of the Latin, Spanish, French, and Arabic that we currently provide, a little bit of office help at Lakes, which remember houses two district-wide positions as well as having the largest K through four, pre-K, K through four enrollment in the district, an assistant coach, which will service both the girls' and boys' tennis teams, and an investment in both ice and pool time for the swim teams and hockey teams. When we held a public hearing for what the community was looking for in the budget, we heard almost exclusively from the hockey and swim community asking for support. I want to be abundantly clear, the $24,000 investment that we're making in ice and pool time is on top of a $10,000 investment made last year and brings us to cutting the parent investment into those facilities, cuts it in half where it was three years ago. Originally, this budget called for $70,000 of investment into that so that we would be able to say we fully fund facilities for all of our athletic programs and that we didn't have to say except for the swim and hockey teams. When we talk about options the board has to change this budget, bringing that line back to $70,000 this year will allow us to make that statement. We cut it in half suggesting that we'll take a step this year and another step next year, and next year, we will be able to say that we fully fund the facilities costs. This would cut that parent expense that you heard about about in half for one year, but we'll talk about that as an option as we move forward. There were other requests made for assistant coaches. In fact, Mr. Jarvis came forward asking for four assistant coach positions this year. We brought it down to one, the one that's been asked for the most repeatedly and that we see as the most urgent at this time. It's another place that the board can make adjustments should you choose to. To look at the staffing then by area, this is what we're looking at. No increase in administration, minimal increases in custodial and parical clerical positions, most of which exist already in this budget, and a teacher increase of 4.6 positions, three or four of which are already again in this year's budget. It's going to be important to note that should we not add those positions, we will in fact literally be increasing class sizes. If we choose not to include the positions here that are marked in blue, we will be increasing pre-K class sizes, kindergarten class sizes, second-grade class sizes, and special education caseloads if we choose not to include those. Important to note that everything you see on this slide, and I believe I've talked more about this slide than any other slide I've shared with you, represents about half a percentage point. So when we're talking about a 4.7% increase, if we took all of this out and impacted those class sizes that I just mentioned, the budget would still be sitting at 4.7. class sizes that I just mentioned, the budget would still be sitting at 4.2%. We would make a half a percent difference if we eliminated everything on this slide. And then I mentioned the staffing and what it looks like by area. I also do want to note, and we will be asked, but hasn't enrollment been declining over the last eight or nine years? The answer is yes, it has. Enrollment has been declining over the last several years. As I mentioned, we're reaching the end of that decline. That decline has not been as severe as it has been in some neighboring communities. But this goes to those budget assumptions we've talked about. As enrollment has declined, we have been changing where we place our teaching resources. Over these same eight or nine years, we have reduced teaching positions in elementary classrooms, world language, PE, music, math, and English language arts. But as we've been making those reductions in those areas, we have been investing some of those resources in other important areas. The expansion of full-day kindergarten, the expansion of art at the elementary level, a significant expansion in school psychologists, social workers, and special education teachers to support the varying and differing needs of students as they come to school every day. Again, by focusing on the social-emotional needs of students, we're not taking our eye off the academic ball. We're helping our students be more ready to meet the academic demands that we place upon them. We have grown our coaching cohorts, and we have grown the support we have for technology in the classrooms. Those are important reinvestments of those dollars, and that is the nimbleness that I talk about, where I say before we ask for new resources, we look at reassigning the resources we have available to us. 4.7% is a significant increase. It is the second-largest increase that we've asked for in the last 12 years. The reasons for that, I believe, are clear. We have worked for the last several years to create a lean budget. In six of the last seven years, our increases have been below 2%. We have been absorbing increased costs within the existing budget. When you keep a budget lid low and lean for several repeated years and then get hit with cost increases, there's nowhere to go anymore. There's no, we have few options now for absorbing these increases after the history of increases below 2%, which will now be an average increase over the last eight years. So that drives us to say that new costs have to be absorbed by asking for new resources. Additionally, and this is where the medical cost story is a two-year story, because last year's medical costs were so unusually high, we avoided placing needed positions in the budget. We placed them in the budget now, and now that they're there, we must build them into the budget and continue paying for those. Again, if we do not recognize those needs, the decisions made to take those out will literally, I'm not just saying figuratively, they will literally, and I can point to specific, I can point to specific sections in which we will talk about increased class sizes in pre-K, kindergarten, and third grade next year, as well as increasing special ed caseloads if we don't fund the positions that are currently working today. And then, we just saw significant increases distributed wholesale across the budget this year, just as we all are. We're seeing increases in heating oil, we're seeing increases in diesel fuel, we're seeing increases in all of our contracted services, and that teacher shortage is creating real cost for us in keeping teachers and substitutes in our classrooms as that becomes a reality. And then the last justification for this increase, and I know that I've said it every year that I've been here, and I know that nobody will be surprised to hear me say it, but again, this year is no year for us to be cutting services in the Guilford Public Schools. It's not what I was hired into the community to do, it's not what we pride ourselves in, and as I look around the room, the pandemic isn't over. We're still experiencing effects, both physical and health effects, but our students are still experiencing primarily social and emotional impacts from the pandemic that they have been through. We are not putting up a mission accomplished sign and saying we did great and saying that we can now begin reducing services because everything's back to normal. This is simply not a year to be reducing services to our students. We're going to begin to wrap this up, but before we do so, I do want to mention the bonding request. I know that you talked about this at some length with Mr. Gurnum on Monday evening at your operations meeting. There are minimal requests in the bonding package this year. There are three small projects, two of which I'm going to note as being maybe a little more discretionary than the others in a few moments, but relatively small compared to past years. There are no significant HVAC projects on the docket for this year, but the gym floor here at Baldwin needs to be replaced. It has been sanded so many times that if we keep sanding it, we're going to begin breaking through in some locations. So the gym floor here at Baldwin, which is original, does need to be replaced. That supports not just this school function, but a significant community function. This gym, a hardwood floor gym, is as important to some community activities as our high school gymnasium is. Additionally, as we prepare to move our central offices onto the high school property into 595 New England Road, there are two projects that would be right to do at this time. One of them is the elevator replacement. Now, I know Cliff shared this with you, but here's the challenge. The elevator works today. The elevator works today, but it's so old that we can't warranty it, guarantee it, or get replacement parts for it anymore. And the building isn't closed up yet, so the right thing to do, while the building is open and we haven't put all of our new walls and new ceilings and new carpets in, the right thing to do would be to upgrade and replace that elevator now while the building is open. It makes a less expensive project, and then once we get in, we will have an elevator that is serviceable, warrantable, and we will know will keep us in good stead. But it works today, so we don't have to replace it. I just kind of know how Murphy's Law works, and if we move in and don't replace it, it's going to go a year or two years from now, and then we'll have a more expensive and invasive project replacing it later once the building renovation is complete. And the furniture package is the same. Right now, we have central offices, or it's similar anyway. We have central offices in three different locations, all of which are still functioning with hand-me-down furniture. The furniture at Lathrop House was given to us by Guilford Savings Bank when they renovated their offices 15 or 20 years ago. Moving into a new central office, it would make sense to include a furniture package in that project so that when we move into 595, we move into finished offices that present this school district to the community in a professional and finished way. It's not necessary. We could move our existing furniture into that location, but it's something that we wanted to bring to the attention of the community. There are then engineering and architectural costs that are associated with this for a capital bonding request of one and a half million dollars approximately, which is lower than most of the requests that we've made in the last several years. The complete operational budget and capital budget come to you then tonight as our administrative draft, and as we've done in every past year, we bring it to you and point out areas that we will need to discuss, that you will need to deliberate as a board. This, I know it sounds silly, but at 4.78%, this is a lean budget. There are additions that I will ask you to consider putting in or back into this budget. Baldwin came forward with a request for team leader stipends here at Baldwin. At the high school, department heads get a stipend. At Adams, team leaders get a stipend. That allows the principal to lean on those leaders for work outside of the contract, to do evening work, to do extra work, to take on added responsibility. We have a team structure here at Baldwin, but we do not have team stipends here at Baldwin. This would be a $15,000 expense, but we cut it out, working hard to get a budget down to 4.75%, which we didn't achieve, but we didn't put this back in when we gave up on making that 4.75 target that we gave ourselves. The original draft that we put together for you was built on suggestion from the pension committee. Since the slides and the budget were created, the pension committee has come back and said, actually, that's a little low. They're suggesting we increase the pension line by $40,000, Linda. So there's a $40,000 increase that we should consider placing into the pension line. We don't have to, but we've been requested to make that increase. Tuition, an $87,000 increase will cover the needs that we know today and leave us a little contingency. It doesn't cover needs that we're not anticipating today, and it's not a healthy contingency. So we should consider whether or not an $87,000 increase should be nudged a little bit to give us more of that contingency. Site improvements did not see a significant increase this year. Years ago, we committed to 1% of the overall budget. That would call for a site improvement line of $680,000. I believe we're at about $540,000. There's room for an investment there should we choose to make that investment. Cliff initially came forward and asked for another HVAC position. It was in the original budget draft. We've cut that position out. It's a new position. It's not one that we're currently funding. It would allow us to cut down on some contractual services. There's an air conditioning van parked in the parking lot right now that's here doing work after hours. That's not our employee. That's a contracted service, but we pulled that position out as we went through. And as I said, for $35,000 increasing for ice and pool time, it would allow this board and this community to say, we pay for all of the transportation, coaching, officiating, and facility costs related to all of our athletic teams here at the high school. We're halfway there. We should be able to say that next year, but if we put 35,000 additional dollars into this budget, we could make that statement this year. I mentioned earlier, Mr. Jarvis requested four assistant coaching positions in this year's budget. We have budgeted for one, again, in the area that we saw the greatest impact. On the other hand, there are also reductions that we may need to consider in this budget. I know that asking this board to forward a 4.78% increase budget is a big ask. Areas of possible reduction to that number, we could hope to bring that medical number down either during your deliberations or maybe by the time we get this to the Board of Finance. Joe Spurgeon knows that we would like to see a reduction. He's continuing to pressure Anthem. We do have a bid package. We will see if any of the competitive bids come in better than what we've budgeted, but we hope to be able to come to you and give you an easy cut by saying, we have good news. Medical is down by 40 or 50 or 80. We will see what we can do for you there. This budget does not currently include any retirement savings. Now, this year, we offered an incentive to teachers not to retire early, but to inform us sooner of their intent to retire. We're aware today of four retirements that will be effective the end of this school year, five, I believe. The bad news is that we know that three of those five fall in shortage areas. They fall in science or special education or technology, areas where we may end up having to match or actually increase the salary to bring in a qualified, certified teacher who we will be proud to have teaching in Guilford. So there might be some room for retirement savings, but I would suggest that we be conservative there to budget 35 or $70,000 of reductions there, I think is manageable. To go over that, there have been years that we've budgeted $200,000 or $210,000 in retirement savings. I don't believe that would be prudent this year. We've heard about the ice and the pool time, but we could cut $24,000 out of this budget if we said the parents need to continue to help raise the funds to support that. That we understand the argument, but now is not the time. That's a little bit of what we've said last year. It's what we've been saying to the hockey parents for 30 years. But that is a discretionary increase that we made this year because we're hearing from the community. Tuition could come down, not a lot, but we might be able to bring that $87,000 down. That would be really taking a gamble. It's been a long time since we've been over budget in special education. That's not to say that students will run out of services. It's to say that if we see cost increases there, we find those dollars in other parts of the budget. I put this item here, but this is a note to all of those teaching positions that were noted in blue. When we chose to increase that LEAT position, I made very clear at a public board meeting that the guidelines for class sizes change between second and third grade. They go up. And so while we recognized that keeping second-grade classes low was prudent this year, we might not be able to continue to fund that position. That would mean second-grade classes that are currently sitting around 15 or 16 this year would go into third-grade sections next year of 23 and 24, which is within board guidelines, but is bigger than is usual here in Guilford. The LEAT teacher position is not the only position that could be so considered. We have four kindergarten sections at Jones that could collapse into three first-grade sections. We've added a fourth pre-K section that could collapse back into three pre-K sections. There's a special ed position that was added that could be removed. Again, none of these positions are currently in the budget, and so to make that adjustment would be a way to bring this cost down. I'll again remind you, we could take all of those positions out. We'd only bring this budget down by half a percent. But as we make difficult decisions, I needed to note those for you. And then, it's separated here, but the bonding request, while it's only a $1.5 million bonding request, I just want to call out that a significant portion of that is for offices. It's not the monies that are going directly into classes to support students. If we felt there needed to be adjustments to the bonding request this year, I would not encourage us or support us pulling out the gymnasium floor here, but I would suggest that while both of the investments at 595 are prudent and make sense, they're not the most urgent investments that we need to make this year, and we could consider those for reductions should we need to. All of that deliberation and debate, I want to point out for the community and remind the board, should take place, I believe, in an environment that recognizes what we're providing currently in the Guilford Public Schools. We've had some press recently. We've had some attention paid to us recently, which is nice. It's not different for me. I think it's just an affirmation of what we've always been doing. But Guilford Public Schools continues to be, I believe, if not the best, one of the best returns on investment for any public school in the state of Connecticut. Any way you measure our schools, whether it's by student satisfaction surveys, by performance on stages or athletic fields, NISH, U.S. News and World Report, the Connecticut State Department of Education, our recent NEASK visit at the high school, we do well. We are recognized as a lighthouse school district in the state of Connecticut. We get invited to participate. We get asked to come visit us. People want to know what the magic sauce is in Guilford Public Schools. It is our parent support. It is the students who come into our classrooms every day. It is in no small part our teachers and principals who work at a very high level every single day, and it's the leadership of this Board of Education. But when you look at our results, the state of Connecticut provides an annual accountability index. It is a score boiled down to a score on a 100-point scale, and it boils down 12 different indicators. When you look at Guilford Public Schools Accountability Index performance, we are the sixth-highest performing school district in the state of Connecticut. We are the fifth-highest performing K through 12 school district. When you look at schools that provide K through 12 service, there are only four towns in the state of Connecticut that outperform Guilford Public Schools. Those are Wilton, New Canaan, Darien, and Trumbull. They are the only schools that outperform us on Connecticut's Accountability Index. Three of those four schools outperform us by less than one percentage point. We all cluster within one percentage point. Wilton is the only school district that outperforms us by more than a point. And three of those four school districts significantly outspend us in their per-student investment. That's an important story to tell. I take enormous pride in that number because the Accountability Index is the single most holistic number that the state provides. They're not just looking at performance on a math or reading or science test. It includes access to arts classes. It includes graduation rate. It includes college performance. It includes attendance rates. When you, when you open up the lens to take the broadest look at Guilford schools, that's when we perform at our best, and to me, that says what it should be saying. We do, we do less well when you look at an individual math or science or English test. When you combine everything together, that's when this community shines. We maintained that performance through the pandemic. The 18-19 score, which was the last time the state compiled an Accountability Index, our score was 84.4. Index, our score was eighty-four point four. This year, when they, when they compiled it again after a two-year hiatus, we were eighty-four point seven. While most school districts in the state saw decline, reasonable decline in that number, we held steady. That's an important indication of the decisions that we've been making and the support that we're getting from the community. That's an important indicator. It's more important to me than NISH. It's more important to me than SAT. It's more important to me than U.S. News and World Report. And it tells me that these schools continue to be worth the investment that we're asking the community to make in them. So I guess that's all to say that as we look at the deliberations about whether to make additions or reductions to this budget, I'm going to be encouraging us to consider holding steady or making additions more than making significant reductions to move this budget forward. Which then brings us to discussion, which doesn't all have to happen tonight. We've got about two months of, or a month of a window to have this conversation. But that's the presentation. As I said, tomorrow morning, these slides will be available on our website. The budget documents will be available on our website, and a link to this really tedious presentation will be available on our website as well.
Wonderful. No, Dr. Freeman, thank you very much. So Board of Education members were given drafts of this budget last week. And so we, some of us have certainly had some time, if not all of us had some time to already dive into this proposed budget. As you say, there'll be a number of opportunities for us to have discussion. We will be meeting with the Board of Finance next week. We will have public hearings in a couple of weeks, and then we will be deliberating together. I do want to make sure that we use this time first for any questions people may have had, either on the presentation Dr. Freeman just gave, or as you have been diving into the books, getting clarification on things that you have questions about, or don't make sense, or, or curious about. And certainly, you know, opening comments if people have them.
Dr. Bell, Tracy, the other practice that I think has worked well for board members is that we are happy to provide written responses to questions as well.
Absolutely.
And that will be done on a rolling document that is shared with the full board, and I believe the public as well. And so if those questions were to go to Katie,
Absolutely.
who would then send them to Jason and Linda and I, then we would give a full written response and just keep updating that list as, as questions rolled in.
And doing it that way allows, allows us to kind of monitor duplicate questions and certainly saves Linda some time in answering duplicate questions. So absolutely. I did want to start with a question, just based on the presentation I know of waiting. Regarding medical costs and the competitive bids, do we have a timeline for that? Do we know what the timeline is for?
So the bids, I believe, are coming back right around this time. We should know in the next few weeks.
Okay.
I hope what the results are.
Okay.
Joe Spurgeon had said no later than by the end of January.
No later than January. Okay. Okay. And I think, you know, that we'll obviously have to wait to see what those look like. One can imagine that, that they will provide us with something to think about on one hand, or in fact, they'll align with what we're seeing from Anthem, or Anthem may even respond in kind once that, okay.
Correct.
All right. That's helpful.
And we're also out to bid for the stop loss as well, correct?
Yes.
The stop loss is actually if we're going to see any improvement, either because Anthem is responsive to the fact that we are bidding, or because somebody else does better. The, the claims are the claims, and the rate is the rate. And so I think if we're going to see an improvement, it would be around stop loss and not around the base expense.
Dr. Freeman, you touched upon it in one of your slides, but what are the, what are the constants? What are the increases that are due to contractual, are due to potential medical increases? Although we haven't seen those yet, but let's just start with contractual increases. What are the numbers that are driving that?
So salaries are going up one point four million in this budget. So remember, last year, medical went up one and a half million. So salaries are going up. Most of our budget is in salaries and associated benefits. We are a people and tenants business. And so the significant increase is in that area this year. And again, remember, any of the new positions that are, those are carried separately.
So this is current positions. This is the increase that we're seeing untouchable, it's one point four. What percentage is that increase, that one point four?
So everything on this slide is about a four percent increase. Every six hundred and eighty thousand would be a percent. And so this is right around two percent of the increase that you're seeing here. And again, this is driven significantly by the fact that all five of our bargaining units this year went through a three-year budget negotiation. We were doing, sorry, not budget negotiation, contract negotiation. We're negotiating with all of our employment associations in the face of, of the same, of the same increase in costs of living that everybody else is seeing. And we are caught in the position of having really good, dedicated, committed employees who do right by our children, and we want to take care of those employees almost as much as we want to take care of our kids every day. And so, again, teachers in Guilford are seeing a significant contract increase this year. I believe they deserve every cent of it. But I also want to make clear to the community that that contract was recognized over months of negotiation, comparing us to every other school district in the state that was going through similar negotiations, and ultimately went to mediation before we settled at a number, a number which is almost four percent, three and a half percent lower than the teachers in New Haven recognized going through a similar negotiation process. I wish we had increased salaries more in this school district, but I recognize that as much as we have responsibility to our students and then our employees, we also have responsibility to the people who live and pay taxes in Guilford. And so it's a significant increase, but I think it is a fair and a responsible increase in that area.
And the two eighty-four transportation is also contractually led, is correct, right?
Correct.
So roughly, you know, one point seven right there is all contractual.
Medical is a contract. I would argue that everything on this slide,
Right.
right? Everything here are nondiscretionary. This is the cost of doing business this, next year, and it goes up. And intentionally want to point out that just trying to do everything we're currently doing is going to cost us four percent anyway. The, the additions, the really important things that we want to add this year, half a percent. And this year, because of the unusual dynamic with last year's medical increase and this year's, most of what we're asking for this year, we've already committed to. And, and so now it would become taking away service rather than not providing something that had been asked for. And then this creates a pressure on some of the newness that we would want to bring, like some additional assistant coaches, maybe more support for ice and pool time, leadership stipends. Some of the really creative ideas didn't even make it into the mix this year because of the pressures that this was creating.
And the increased costs of your previous slide, the nondiscretionary, we're going to see those almost automatically next year by contract. So we're going to be facing a cost driver next year of about three point nine percent, which, we're not going to see two percent increases for a while.
I think, and again, right, in my, my comments about other, other districts and the numbers they're seeing, I think that's correct, and I don't think Guilford will be unique in seeing that.
I, I put that as a preface to say that what, on the last slides you were showing in terms of where we can reduce and where we can add, I think we'd be wise to think about paying for as much as we can now than pushing it forward. I don't know what that means, because we already know we're going to be pushing forward six increases. And we don't want to be going forward next year with a five and a half percent if we could end up fooling around this year by a half a percent. So our wiggle room on this is not as great as it was for the last three years.
I'm not hearing that fuel costs are going to go down dramatically in the next year. You know, hopefully, we could see some leveling off of software costs, but I don't think that transportation or heat and tuition costs, I don't think are all of a sudden going to go away. We have students with, with individual and specific needs, and there'll always be a need to, to contract or tuition some students who have specific needs. Yeah, I don't think that that's completely off base. And, and again, we're not going to be seeing declining enrollments that will allow us to offset increasing costs by shrinking class sections. We're in fact leveling off, and we know that we will begin growing again over the next five to ten years.
Going back to the medical. When you put up the slide with the, the history over the last, I don't know, eight or ten years, all the years were ten point one million, except for the last two. Can you explain why maybe we didn't budget and put aside or, or plan for that? In other words, if even before the pandemic, it was ten point something million, and then it dropped to eight point million during the pandemic? Just trying to figure that out.
I, I think the savings that we began to see were through the shift that we made to HSA. So pre-pandemic, we did a lot of work to shift from a, a more traditional health plan to a point of, to a, a health savings account. And once we moved everybody there, there were some initial savings in the early years of making that change. We sort of leveled out. I think the market caught on to the fact that lots of municipalities were moving to HSAs. The market leveled off. Everybody got the savings out of that, and then we started growing back again. I think that then got combined with some reality of claims locally. And so when you are a relatively small body, you have some bad luck for some of the members, and you see some family members or some employees who have expensive experiences, that impacts your rates. And then, and then we've used up the savings. We had some negative experience. I hate to say it because it sounds so flimsy, but a lot of this just has to do with luck, right? It has to do with how well your claims are, and that sets your base. If you're lucky and healthy for a few years, you go through a good period, and then you have some difficult challenges for employees or their family members, and that affects your base rate, and then dramatically affects that, that insurance that we carry for the excess, you know, the,
The stop loss.
The stop loss, thank you. You hit stop loss repeatedly, they're going to raise your stop loss amount, and then that's going to be, that's going to be an impact.
Thank you.
You, you probably covered this, but I'm, I'm thinking of it in a slightly different way. So ESAR, positions that were on ESAR, on the ESAR grant, school psychologist and school social worker are, we hope and expect could be covered by the competitive mental health grant that you spoke about. What other, if any, positions were on the ESAR that are now going into the budget?
There was an additional social worker that we pulled into the budget last year.
Last year.
There was an English language teacher, English as learned language teacher that we pulled into the budget last year. And that left us with a social worker, a school psychologist, a custodian.
Custodian.
We're pulling the custodian into the budget.
The custodian into the budget, and the other two we think are going to be covered.
The other two, we're,
Okay.
it's in a bit of an exposure, but we believe
Right.
that we will be able to win a competitive grant that will continue to fund them, which only will kick the can down the road, right?
No, absolutely, yes.
So when that competitive grant runs out, then we will be coming forward and building those positions into the base budget, or saying, we believe we no longer need the level of mental health staffing that we currently have, and we can let those positions go.
And are these one-year grants? Or we don't even know?
No, there's, it's more than a year.
Okay.
And there's actually two rounds of it.
Okay.
So we're hoping that we'll get at least one of them.
That's, that's what I meant, but we're not sure. Because sometimes that's the way it happens.
At least a full year.
Okay.
I think it goes up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is the award for the year.
Question about Japanese foreign language. Where did that come from? I, I, you know, I'm just curious. We, and you listed, you listed the, the languages that are taught as well. Could you go over that as well and just talk about how we arrived on Japanese?
Yeah, in a future meeting, I'll invite Mrs. Chaff to speak more specifically to it. But it was a combination of both creativity and necessity. We currently carry a point four position for French at the high school. We've got more than that. We've got a full-time French position. We've got a position that is split between Arabic and French. And then additionally, we carried an additional point four French position. We have been unsuccessful in the last several years in keeping that position staffed. World Language is a shortage. French is a specific shortage area, and trying to find somebody willing to take a part-time French position here, what, it's, it's been unsuccessful. We've been asking the other two French teachers to teach beyond the contract limit to cover that need. Mrs. Chaff, looking at the enrollment in the languages, looking at IB placements as well as AP class sections, and then thinking creatively, suggested that going to a one point O position, but in Japanese. So we'll, we'll cut the point four French, we'll add point six, a net increase of point six, and go out to hire a full-time Japanese teacher, which would now allow us at our high school to be offering Latin, Spanish, French, Arabic, and Japanese to students. So we will expand the offerings, and we will move away from an area where we've been unsuccessful in hiring and holding on to a teacher. A one point O position is always more, more likely to hire for and then to retain. It's a bit of a risk whether or not we will find a Japanese teacher with the proper certification and experience and meet our expectations, but it's an exciting risk to take. And it's, it's the most creative suggestion that you see on the list here this year. So we are excited about the opportunity to expand. The board knows that we're continuing to face challenges staffing World Language at the elementary level as well. We've had several meetings this year with the administrative team and teachers from the World Language Department talking about creative solutions at both the elementary and the high school level around what the future of World Language instruction should and practically could look like moving forward.
Why Japanese rather than Chinese?
I'm going to need to ask Mrs. Chaff to, to give you that answer. I'm not sure how she, she and her department moved in that direction. I remember asking that question, but I can't remember what, what her response was.
Didn't they offer Chinese in the past at the high school?
Madison, Madison does. And there was, the board talked years ago about figuring out whether there could be some kind of shared experience regionally, right? Could we somehow figure out how students here could take Mandarin in Madison, how students in Madison could take Arabic here? There were a number of considerations, everything from what, you know, buses to, to, to how the classes work, to all kinds of stuff, but.
Right down to a really simple difference in that we're based on quarters and semesters and, and is built on trimesters.
And trimesters, so.
But learn is also leading some conversations, and we've talked coming out of the pandemic about trying to leverage distance learning. And so could the opportunity to do, the buses were always a driving factor because we can't offer credited courses without, without allowing for the transportation as well.
It seems silly, but they, they really did create some barriers.
But there could be an opportunity to do this as a night class. How exciting would it be to offer a credited high school class with a certified teacher that met from four to five P.M.? And the students attended by Zoom, and we could take students from Madison, Branford, and Guilford and allow them to sign up for an Arabic. Now, there's a lot of contractual issues. When you only have one certified Arabic teacher, you can't tell that person that they have to teach a class on Zoom from four to five in the evening. So there'd have to be some work done. But how exciting would it be to say that we offered Mandarin, Japanese, and Arabic, and it happened from four to five in the evening by Zoom, but you got full credit on your transcript regardless of which of the three towns you lived in? So there continues to be some excitement around that, but no, no firm answers at this
Regarding athletic training, heard a lot on the news about shortages and whatnot, and there's a significant increase in here. Is fifty-five thousand, is that going to cover us for all of our sports? Is that, that's not in-house, right? That's still?
We went back and forth about going in-house and hiring our own employee. We looked at staying with the contract. Right now, we believe that will be enough to meet our needs realistically. It may not be.
Do we know what the in-house estimate might be? Is it around? I mean, just curious to know because it sounds like it would be wise to maybe consider in-house.
If we were to do in-house, it would have been more than, more than that.
Okay.
I actually met with the company today. They are doing everything they can, because we lost our trainer. Our trainer has moved on to another district. They're doing everything they can to cover us now, and they are trying really hard to hire somebody for next year, and they're hoping that they can come in somewhere around the fifty-five. It may not be enough. It may not be enough. But they're trying to, to keep it as close to 55 as they can.
The reality is that could change significantly between now and next September. We will likely end up being over budget in that line for this year. We went back and forth on this. We looked at going in-house. The reality, at least with having a contract, is that we will have a company to yell at and demand service. We've gone half of the school year now and have just hired our nurse coordinator, who will be starting next week because we were unable to fill that position for half a year. Jason's been running the nursing program in district for the first half of this year because we've been unable to fill that position successfully. We tried to find a contract service that would provide management of the nurse, and we couldn't find a contract service that would provide that for us. Again, this is, these are some of the areas that are impacting. We're bus drivers, substitutes, recess monitors, nurses, athletic trainers. We are, no pun intended, we're no longer driving the bus. We've got, we've got young teachers who are, are interviewing with us, getting a proposal from us, and then telling us, I've got two other offers on the table. What are you going to do for me? And that's happening in multiple areas. The employees are very much in the driver's seat in the number of these positions right now.
You noted it. I had it circled here just as a question, and there's obviously an explanation. But the lunchroom and recess aids, a significant increase because it looks like we've had teachers covering a number of those positions.
This goes back to that conversation we had with the, the administrators, and you heard Doug speak to it. Keeping positions like lunch monitor, recess monitor, hall monitor, staffed effectively allows teachers not to be pulled away from their planning periods, their PLCs, their coaching cycles. When we need, when we need to cover art classes with English teachers or principals, we're covering the urgent need of the moment, but the important work of the learning and the growth isn't happening in the school. And so I know Doug was really sort of eloquent in saying, it doesn't sound exciting, but please make sure we're staffing all of those ancillary positions because they keep teachers where they need to be.
You mentioned twice there were four totals, four assistant coaches. What were the other three besides tennis?
Jake requested an increase in assistant coaches in swimming specifically for the dive team, for the football team, for the cross-country teams, and for the tennis teams. We ended up moving only the tennis position forward at this time because it's the one that's been requested three or four years in a row and will impact both the girls' and boys' tennis teams and so touches a large number of students by putting that position in that location. Football team also touches a number of students, but we have taken advantage of the booster club there that has been funding that position. That one's probably been requested more years in a row than the tennis position was. But we expect that if we don't fund that one this year, that the football boosters will come through again, and they will continue to provide that for another year. We seriously entertained swim and dive. Right now, that need is being met through a collaborative agreement. It impacts a very small number of students relative compared to the other positions. Again, if I had had a 2% budget in front of you, that would be there. It's a small number. But trying hard to get down to that 4.75, we only leave that one of the four requests forward.
Other questions for Dr. Freeman or the administration at this time?
There'll be more.
Oh, I'm sure there'll definitely be more. You know, this is, again, for the, for the public as well as, as for all of us. This is a process of deep discussion, diving into books, crunching numbers, making considerations and deliberations. We, again, we received these budget books, so to speak, last week. Dr. Freeman has presented this to us tonight formally. We will be meeting, having our second meeting with the Board of Finance next Tuesday. This allows them to, to ask us some, some detailed questions and allows us to, to discuss, and Dr. Freeman, discuss the rationale behind decisions in this draft budget. We will hold two public hearings on this budget, Monday, January 23rd and Tuesday, January 24th. The public is welcome to come to either or both of those public hearings and comment to the board, ask questions, or otherwise make requests to the board regarding this draft budget.
And those are going to be scheduled at the high school this year. Traditionally, those have been in the Adams Chorus Room, but both of those dates are at the high school this year.
Okay, that's really important to know. We will have, we have already on the calendar for Monday, February 6th, a Board of Ed special meeting to approve this budget. However, we are at liberty to add additional meetings between now and then to allow for further discussion. And we have certainly taken advantage of those in the past. Those will, of course, be posted in advance so that the public is aware that the Board of Ed is adding meetings to continue discussion and deliberation on the budget. Likewise, and then, sorry, so that we will be voting on February 6th, and we'll be submitting then the budget after the Board of Ed has worded on it to the Town Hall on February 7th. That is the plan as laid out here. In addition to our discussions, again, as, as Dr. Freeman noted, I welcome any board member to reach out with questions. I will submit them to Linda, and then we can all benefit from the answers to those as they come in. What am I forgetting, anything?
Just encourage the public for input.
Yes, please, absolutely. Again, we, these will be on the Guilford Public Schools website. I think you said tomorrow, so that the public can then dive in as well. We do, as I said, have these public forums. If there are questions people have and they want to reach out by email to, to, to the board ahead of time, they can certainly do that as well.
And again, I just want to thank the board for your flexibility. I sort of like doing it in a special meeting. I know it made two meetings for you this week, and I very much appreciate that.
All right. So if there are no more kind of questions at this moment, I am going to entertain a long motion to adjourn.
No motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you so much. Good night.